Could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lightner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Plachek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Elwell?
Here.
Eight present.
Entertained a motion to approve the agenda? Have a motion in support? Any deletions or changes? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition. Is there any communications or petitions that would like to come before the board? If you have anything you'd like the commissioners to have this evening? Seeing not, moving on to special order and public hearings, we have none. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Each individual must state their name, and we have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under public comment. The opportunity may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. We have the first opportunity for public comment. Any public comment?
Peter Bormuth. I'd like everyone to take note of Senate bill. I believe it's 395 introduced by Senator Mekoff. He's the President of the Senate. It provides the opportunity for private police forces in this state. It gives these private police forces, you can control one if you have $200 in the application fee and five people testify to your character. It gives these private police forces absolute governmental immunity, same as our police officers have, yet there is no direct oversight or accountability. This is a bill they determined for two reasons. One, they wanted to make it an end run around pensions. They didn't have the courage to take on the pensions of our police officers the way they took on the pensions of our teachers. They tried one time in a session before Christmas and it didn't work. So this is an end run around that issue. These new private police officers would not receive pensions. And it's an end run around accountability that's being created by the wearing of body cams and the wear, you know, and police and cell phones and the car cams that we have that are creating more and more accountability in our police forces, which is a good thing for all of us, for all citizens. And this would make an end run around that. Bad cops, bad apple cops who were fired could immediately go to work for these private agencies as long as they had held a position in a police force in the preceding two years and as long as they didn't have a felony on their record, there would be no background check. As you all know, police officers are very, very rarely convicted of a crime against a citizen. Sometimes they're disciplined within the department. Sometimes they're even fired for violating departmental rules. But it's very rare that a jury convicts a police officer. So these bad apples could immediately go to work for a private agency where there is no governmental oversight, no citizen ability to hold them accountable. This is essentially a Christian fascist police force that will terrorize our community. In the long term, I wouldn't doubt that they'll engage in extortion. They can be hired by anyone. I mean, a nonprofit, a business, a municipality, a township, a village. I mean, this bill is downright dangerous. And I hope you'll pay attention to it and possibly pass a resolution opposing it. I appreciate your time.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, my name is Sherry Eva. I'm from Blackman Township. And I am a pre-65 retired ASME employee, past union president, who bargained in good faith with the commissioners over the years. And under the 95-97 contract, the employees who were full-time at the time of ratification had eight years of service or more. As of 12/31/99, will be grandfathered in to the 95-97 contract. We won a policy grievance, which was done in September of 13. Crystal Dixon wrote it up. Copies went to Overton and Joni Johnson. I believe you all received a copy of this at the October 3 meeting. It stated that the intent for the certain pre-65 retirees were covered grandfathering clause in the CBA as a result of the language prevention moving those individuals into specific proposed plans as it was revised as lesser coverage than the current that we have. And that is what we're seeing today, that it's lesser coverage. Right now, I don't have co-pays. I'm looking between my husband and I at $2,000 to $4,000 a year. I think that's unfair. There's not that many of us on this list, and I think it should be reconsidered. I think it's a slap in the face for years of service. I retired in 2008. I have worked for nine and a half years as a casual employee at the same rate of pay. I'm on a fixed income. I think you guys should reconsider what you're doing. I don't have a problem with you changing it. We always had that before as a policy. But it had to be equal to or better than. And this does not look to me equal to. And it's certainly not better than. Thank you for your time.
Any more public comment?
My name's Dwayne Pittman. I'm from Napoleon Township. I'd heard a couple of different people say that there had been no objections at different stages of this procedure or whatever it is you want to call it that we're going through with the changes to our health care. I have made contact with a couple of commissioners, albeit by Facebook or text message, but I certainly have contacted them and expressed my feelings. So I'm not sure where they get that no one has disagreed with this. What's going on when we negotiated contracts? We agreed to them, they were signed, they were bargained for, and we gave up raise after raise after raise to keep our health care, to keep our retirement benefits the same, and to try to do the right thing. And everybody planned their lives around those things. In my opinion, if this isn't criminal, it sure in the heck ought to be. And what you're doing, if you do this, is just about as American as taking a needle in a national anthem. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Tom Furo. Okay, so you started. I got a couple of questions for you, so I guess I'm just going to get right to them. First and foremost, I want to know why this is happening. You know, I've got a letter here that says you've been studying this for months and you're trying to figure it out, and you're out of money, and the projected for 2018 is you're going to be in a deficit. I was in a meeting here the other day on the 9th, and I heard the county controller say that on two separate line item budgets, he's ahead of expected revenues. I've listened to the stock market since November of last year and the presidential election, and it's historical highs. Pretty sure that's where all this pension money is invested at. So I'm confused as to how that can be, that you're out of money. But nonetheless, if that's the reason, I did look at the proposal. I was told on the 3rd there were going to be three different benefit plans. I only saw one, only one person here, but that's what I got. So my FOIA request, I know you're shocked it didn't get completed yet. So I can't argue with that, other than to say I was told there would be three, and there was one. When I looked at the numbers off of this, it looks like the whole squabble here is over $123,000. And if we're arguing about $123,000, my question is, how much did you already spend to change this? I know you can't talk. The other question is, how much are you going to spend? You say you have 600 county employees. And 166 retirees are the numbers I'm hearing you talk in these last couple of meetings. So how much does it cost to change health benefits and cards and software and time and energy and employees and training and all that to change for all those people? I did ask a question at the last one of these I was at about Blue Cross Blue Shield, the letter we all got, all the retirees, at least to my knowledge. The one that I got says, "Any changes to this plan have to be okayed by Blue Cross Blue Shield." I'm wondering if this one was. Pretty sure I know the answer to that. These are contractual agreements. I'm pretty sure you guys understand what that means. So we'll leave it at that. Option C, interesting option, cash in lieu of. All the way through this nightmare, I'm hearing, "What a great plan this is. It's going to be nationally accepted."
Thirty seconds, sir. Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. What you're doing is wrong. What you're doing isn't right. What you're doing is, for $123,000, you guys gave away $310,000 in pay increases this year alone. Every one of you got a pay increase. And you're going to take money away from retirees? I think you're going to, you really need to rethink that. You're going to regret it if you do. Thank you.
Luanne Allen, Jackson County retiree. I have to apologize for my frustration getting the best of me on October 3. I appreciate you looking at the documents that I brought. Of the names listed in that document, in the beginning, there were only nine full-time employees that that covered at the time, and 44 pre-retirees, 65. Of that amount, half of them have already reached Medicare age. So you are devastating the oldest employees, retirees. My budget just can't take it. I'm on a fixed income. It's been that way for 10 years. It's just impossible. It'll cost me $5,000 with medication and everything else if you go with that plan. That's almost a year's worth of a house payment or a car payment. I please wish you would reconsider. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Todd Long, retired deputy of Jackson County Sheriff's Office. Also resident of Spring Arbor Township. First off, I disagree with the decision that's going to be made here tonight that you're going to do this to the retirees. One of the things that concerns me is that the only information that we received as retirees was a two-sheet letter indicating there's going to be a change. When I started asking more questions, was anyone involved in this process to relieve some, maybe some of the problems that you're hearing tonight? And I was told no. Also, what I've accumulated in the last two days is both the HAP information and the Blue Cross information. Seems like that should have been in the letter as well to inform us what's going on. When I started reading through this and pulling this apart with other people who are in the insurance industry, I discovered something. My biggest question was, a lot of retirees do not live in Jackson County anymore. I'm sorry, I mean, Jackson's a nice place, but we want to move on. The out-of-pocket expense of, if we went with a HAP compared to the current Blue Cross plan, so if I have a $100,000 event, I have a heart attack. I need a new valve. It's $100,000. I live in Florida, Nevada, Tennessee, whatever. Under the current plan, it's $2,500 I pay out of my pocket. Under the HAP plan, it's $50,000. It's writing right here. That's a big change. That's not comparable coverage, as it says in the contracts. My advice is that this needs to be researched a little bit more. I understand that there's changes in the insurance area. I think we're all fighting that. But to go from a $2,500 copay to a $50,000 copay for a $100,000 event is far more than comparable coverage. And that affects everybody on that side of the wall and on this side of the wall. And the more I go through this with a HAP, HAP compared to our comparable Blue Cross, I keep seeing the word, you know, "not covered" or anything that's out of network. Again, like I said, we have a lot of retirees that do not live in Jackson anymore, let alone Michigan. Or if they live on the west side of the state, you're going to ship us all the way back here to Jackson in order to get part of the Henry Ford system, which I don't have a problem with. They're a very good system. But again, you're limiting our people. You're taking away any money they have saved over any $100,000 event. And that's something we need to look at, rather than just saying, "Here it is, this is what we have." Because it also concerns you. I assume you're going to get the same health plan.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I assume you have the same health plan I'm going to end up getting, that you might as well just start saving $50,000, because that's what you're going to have to pay according to HAP. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings, a standing committee. Entertain a motion for minutes of the September 19, 2017 meeting. We have a motion in support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Arrived at the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion, I have support. Commissioner Duckham?
I'm sorry, we can't hear.
Here's what's going to happen. We're going to move the item which says, "Under the consent agenda", item 11E, we're going to move it to 16A. Unfinished business. Any other items for removal? You have before you, the approval of the consent agenda has amended. You may please vote. Consent agenda has amended, has passed 8-0. Now arrived at standing committee report, affairs and agencies, chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Mr. Chairman, we have appointments tonight. First up is the sanitary code, Board of Appeals. Public seats are alternate positions. There's two current members, but there's no applicants and no recommendations from committee. And secondly, we have the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. It's one public member. It's a vacant seat. There were no applicants at the time of committee meeting and no recommendation from committee.
At this time, I'd like to nominate from the floor A.J. Crownover for the Brownfield Authority. Have a motion in support. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
That's all the report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee, Human Services, chaired by Commissioner Carl Rice. Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Services has no business to come before the board tonight.
Thank you, Carl. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance, chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel and Finance does not have any business tonight to conduct.
Thank you. We are now arrived at item 16A. Administrator Controller Report on Pre-65 Healthcare. Mr. Sherman, you're here this evening. Would you care to join us, please, at the podium?
Good evening.
Would you like to address us first?
Thank you. I was asked to attend the meeting tonight, to take whatever questions there may be relative to the proposal for pre-65 retiree healthcare. As the board is aware, we, for the last several months, have been working in conjunction and collaboration with Jackson Health Network, Henry Ford Allegiance Health, and Health Alliance Plan to arrive at a proposal for replacement of the current program with an insured arrangement through HAP, which would meet the budgetary targets that the county had established for the project while attempting to maintain a relatively high level of protection and security for the pre-65 retirees. That proposal has been put forth, both at the study session and the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting. And it is unchanged for purposes of tonight's meeting.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg, for the retirees in attendance, could you tell me what their options are? Explain it to me if they live in Benton Harbor or Tennessee or Florida for coverage?
Sure, I'd be happy to. There seems to be some confusion about what is being proposed in terms of the network under this program. The network is a PPO, a preferred provider organization, very similar to what many of the retirees have today. There are some retirees who are in some older legacy plans that don't have a network associated with their program. They're what we call old traditional plans. But by and large, most pre-65 retirees are in a PPO today through Blue Cross Blue Shield in Michigan, which provides national coverage. The same would be true under the HAP arrangement. In Michigan, HAP has a subsidiary organization called Alliance Health and Life, and that is the PPO network here in Michigan. Outside of Michigan, HAP's partner, Cigna Healthcare, provides a national PPO for access to in-network care.
Okay, so if we have an employee, a pre-65 retiree, living in Florida, they would use their HAP card, but Cigna would be, pick up the coverage?
That's correct.
And they would be treated as in-network?
That is correct.
Okay. Second question here, I may. How about the heart valve procedure surgery, where it's $2,500, going up to $50,000? Is that accurate?
I can't speak to what the charge would be out of network. Currently, there's no established out-of-pocket maximum on the out-of-network benefit, as it's been proposed, whereas there is a $2,000 in-network out-of-pocket limit.
Okay, so because Cigna would pick it up out of network, it wouldn't jump clear to the $50,000 because it's in-network? Is that correct, what you said?
If it's in-network, it would be capped at the out-of-pocket limit in-network.
Excellent. Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's in the Alliance Health and Life network here in Michigan or the Cigna National PPO, which is a very large network, that would be considered in-network.
That would include Florida residents?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
Tom?
So I'm living out of state, any state, and I have this heart attack, and I need the valve work done. And they take me to the nearest hospital. It might be out of network. What are my responsibilities going to be?
The program would work exactly like it does today within the various PPO and point-of-service plans for the retiree group, which is that emergency care is covered under the program. Now, there is a certification process that one needs to go through after the admittance to make sure that any services that are ongoing, that continue to be administered in the out-of-network facility, would be considered in-network. Or they'd have to work with HAP to make sure that there's a proper transition of care to an in-network facility as soon as possible.
Is it honest to say that all the large health systems are putting together their own groups, like HAP or Sparrow and their group and the DMC and all the other groups that are going to survive, the small hospitals?
A number of them have, yes. Yeah, and you point to good examples here in Michigan.
Commissioner Elwell?
Well, Greg, in the example that John gave, if you're out of state and you end up going to a facility that's not Cigna, as long as you follow their procedures, you're going to be covered as if it's in-network? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, under the emergency care provisions.
Thank you.
I don't have it with me, but in essence, it is referred to typically as a prudent person doctrine, which is to say that if you feel your health, your life, is threatened under the circumstances, if any reasonable person would construe the situation to be an emergency, then seek care in the emergency room. If it's something that's, you know, a bad earache, a bad cold, you know, something of that nature, clearly, that's not emergency. That might be treated under urgent care or waited out or called teledoc, for example.
Or someplace far away nice. And I do get chest pain, okay? And it gets worse and worse. And I get an ambulance that takes me to the closest hospital, which is what they're supposed to do. And that hospital is not participating, okay, and so on. I get admitted, and I get put under observation, all right? So the concept of an emergency, emergency is over. I'm under observation, okay? And then they do a cardiac cath on me the next day, and they find out that I have two blocked arteries, and they go and then put a couple of stents in, and I'm still in a hospital, okay? At what point does that emergency event, okay, not become an emergency and the person is charged for it, okay? And how does that person, when he's sick and ill, contact anybody to get, you know, insurance coverage or find out what's going on? I mean, that's tough to do. I can't get people cleared in my office for surgery, okay, with the insurance companies because they're so, I won't say it, okay? But how is somebody out of state going to be able to do that, okay, with the insurance companies?
The short answer is that it would work essentially the way it works today for emergency care. So in this instance, you know, chest pain is almost always considered true emergency because you don't know if it's, you know, acid reflux and digestion or heart attack or whatnot. So the recommendation is to seek care immediately. If you have an inability or choice to pick the facility, great. If not, then that situation would be treated just like it is under Blue Cross Blue Shield today. So there is a requirement of the Blue Cross terms to coordinate that care with Blue Cross to make sure that the in-network level of benefit is provided, even though the facility is out of network. I can't promise that always happens. That's up to the discretion and the judgment of Blue Cross Blue Shield, or in this case, HAP, and their utilization managers.
John, then, Dave?
Okay, we were talking about PPO mostly right now, but there are two HAP plans. One, if you live locally, there's a different plan that you can choose from, correct?
Not for the pre-65 retirees. There's a single PPO option that has been recommended to replace all of the existing PPO, point-of-service and traditional plans that exist today for the pre-65.
I guess I was under the impression at one time there was two plans for pre-65.
That was on the table. As you recall, that's the model for the active, non-represented population of the county. And that was on the table for consideration for the pre-65 retirees. But it was determined really at the time, the decision was made that restricting access through the HMO would not be palatable or tenable for the population.
Mr. Elwell?
Two questions, one for Greg and then one for the administrator. Greg, one of the questions I've heard circulated from the retirees is about coverage of their children up to 26. So under this, and especially if they're, for instance, at an out-of-state college, that's not an issue because of the Cigna element of it? Is that accurate?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. And then, Mike, if you could, if I can ask you a question, and I think it's in the documents, but financially, to retain the current plan that we have, which would be for the coming year, an additional $501,000 over what we pay now? Is that what the estimate is?
No, our Blue Cross estimate was over $900,000 total increase.
Okay, I was thinking it was 501 for the year, but it's, okay.
If I may, Mike, for the Pre-65 segment alone, that was about a 20% increase or $502,000 annually.
I thought I'd seen that figure. Thank you.
Overall, it was much higher, including the actives, yes.
Commissioner Duckham, then, Commissioner Rice?
Greg, I'd like to take one of our fine retirees.
Phil, we're going to do that in a minute.
Analogy, oh, okay, go ahead.
I guess I was going to say, we're going to do that. If you're going to speak analogy, go ahead. I apologize.
Okay, we talk about a heart valve replacement surgery. We're out of network. We go to the emergency room, do the right thing. Do we then stabilize the patient and move him for his heart valve surgery to an approved hospital for insurance coverages, or is the whole thing treated as an emergency where they can have the heart valve repair or replacement surgery at a hospital that really didn't meet our initial qualifications?
As it works today, the same would be true. Every situation is different, and so whether it makes sense to stabilize the patient and continue to administer care in that facility, for example, if it's a heart situation, maybe that particular facility that happens to be out of network just happens to be, you know, a top performer, high outcomes, low cost, you know, low rates of readmission, high success rate, et cetera. It may very well be the case that the patient is authorized to stay in that facility. Again, these are medical determinations that certainly I'm not equipped to address because every situation is different. And HAP, as is the case with Blue Cross, they defer to their clinical teams, MDs, and so forth, to make those determinations on what's appropriate under the circumstances.
Either way, they will get proper emergency and long-term care.
Most certainly.
Fix a problem, whether it's one hospital or another, they won't go without.
Correct.
And they won't jump from $2,500 or $1,500 to $50,000 co-pay.
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, we can't argue that the out-of-pocket, there is an increase. And certainly, we have several Pre-65 employees here now, or retirees, I should say, too. What would you say to them, aside from the out-of-pocket, as far as maybe alleviating any fears they may have in regards to this overall plan as opposed to what they have now?
Well, you know, from my perspective, being consultant to the county for a number of years, you know, we've worked very hard for the better part of six months in collaboration with HAP, Jackson Health Network, and Henry Ford Allegiance to design a program that, still, in spite of the cost shift, and there's no doubt there's additional exposure to the retirees. They face increased costs if they are users of the plan, and many of them will be. But we've worked very diligently to design a program that substantively keeps them secure, that provides great value, and that won't bankrupt anybody who happens to become very ill or is seriously injured on account of an accident. These are not easy decisions, we understand, but we have negotiated very tightly with HAP to make sure that the optimal level of benefit under the plan that we could possibly attain, we have at the lowest cost we could possibly get it.
Any further Commissioner questions? Dr. Tompkins?
I'm sorry, but, you know, I've been in the field for 40 years, okay, and so on, and I don't understand, or maybe I don't believe, okay, the situations you're describing. When someone goes into the ER, the first thing they think of is, am I going to live or die? Not, well, is my insurance covered here? Okay, and so on. There's no time to call up the number on the card and say, can I get authorized for this or this and this, okay? And all you're doing is talking to somebody with a high school education, going through a book, seeing if you have the right adjectives to get authorized, okay? It's a nightmare, okay? And when people are down out of the area, okay, and they get hurt, or they go to a place, okay, a hospital, okay, that hospital's going to look and see what their insurance status is, and I'm going to say to them, well, you know, your insurance doesn't cover this here, but we can ship you to the hospital over here where your insurance is covered. We stabilized you in the ER, okay, and so on. That happens all the time, all over the place. My own daughter, who was a resident down at Henry Ford Hospital in Orthopedics, okay, was pregnant. She got sent to Minneapolis for her pediatric rotation, okay, and she had to have a, well, whatever you ladies call it, baby checkup or whatever it is, okay? And guess what? She was an employee. She was a resident, okay? Henry Ford didn't pay for it. She had to pay out of her pocket, okay, and so on, which is no big deal, but it sort of ticked me off, okay, that they would do that to their own residents or employees, all right? So, I have a bad taste in my mouth for HAP. I really do. HAP existed when I was down there as a resident 40 years ago. I had a bad taste then getting things authorized, to get people taken care of, okay? Had multiple fights and arguments with them, okay? I don't like HAP, okay, and so on, and I don't trust them, okay? So, I don't mean, I'm not attacking you, I'm just venting, okay? But that's how I feel.
I appreciate your perspective.
Any other Commissioner comments? Okay, at this time, I would like the Board of Commissioners to consider suspending our current rules and allowing the retirees to politely ask a question of Mr. Sermont if they would like to. If that is the case, I would like to, I have a motion. Do I have support? Have a motion and support. All in favor for suspending the rules and asking the retirees to politely ask their questions without becoming belligerent, and we will try to work our way through this process so you can have your questions answered, understanding that we have two meetings also scheduled that you can go to if you have further questions and would like to have them answered, or if you feel more comfortable it being done in private, we can do that also. That's going to be part of the meetings, the two meetings we have coming. So, at this time, we have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, if you would raise your hand, I will recognize you. Do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Just wondered if...
Your first name, please, just your first name.
Dwayne Piven.
Go ahead, Dwayne.
Has Blue Cross contacted? Because I've heard a ton of rumors that, you know, our insurance is going to go up this much, and this is what we're projected, and yet we've talked to some Blue Cross people that say they were not contacted. They were not asked whether or not the rate was going to go up. This is something that was concocted by the Board and behind everyone's back. That's basically what we're hearing.
I can certainly address that, Dwayne. As consultants to the county, the county having a self-insured plan, we wouldn't necessarily go to Blue Cross for solicitation of various options. We know what those options are. We have actuarial capabilities and underwriting capabilities to develop those models and prices and so forth. If this were an insured arrangement, it would be different. We would definitely go to Blue Cross. As it was, on several occasions, we did solicit some specific proposals from the Blues on a couple of new products that they've developed and pushed to market, and those, for a variety of reasons, weren't a good fit for the county, nor did they attain the cost reduction targets that we were charged with. I'm not sure who you're referring to when you speak of Blue Cross representatives, but we have designated contacts at a managerial, director, and executive level, excuse me, within Blue Cross that we normally work with, and they're well aware at this point of what's transpired over the last few months.
Renee.
Go ahead, Renee.
I just have a question because I retired four years ago. My husband works out of state, and I also have a daughter out of state in college. And so, his doctors are there because he's there 90% of the time out of state, not here. So, do I assume that this is going to cost me, like, every year, a deductible of, like, $6,000 before I even get care?
No. As mentioned before, there's a national PPO network through Cigna that's available to all members of your family. And so, just as the program works today, where you seek out a participating facility, doctor, whomever, you'd be encouraged to do the same on a go-forward basis. But rather than the Blue Cross network, it would be the Cigna Healthcare Network for out-of-state care. And in those instances, the deductible is $100 per person per year.
So, if there was a surgery or something out, though, it's not, does 80/20 or whatever that keeps coming up?
Well, there's cost share above the deductible. The deductible is just one component of the cost share. So, today, for example, a lot of the plans have other cost share through copayments and coinsurance, the 20%, the 80/20 split that you refer to.
But I don't get that now.
On a go-forward basis, that would be a core component of the plan.
But I'm just saying, if you're retired on fixed income, you know, it's different. 20% on a surgery or something.
I appreciate the, you know, the financial imposition that it puts on everybody. Nobody likes change or cost shift, but that is a standard component of the plan design going forward.
First name, sir?
Hi, my name's Todd. I guess with what she was just talking about with the paperwork that we were sent, that has that 80/20, so some of these questions that I was hearing the Commissioners ask about being out of state and having a heart attack or a valve or something replaced, the real answer that you should be giving them is yes. We have to pay 20% of what that bill is. So, if that bill is $100,000, according to the paperwork that we have been given, we have to pay 20% of that bill.
If I can clarify, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I misspoke early addressing your question. When you referenced the 20%, it's actually a 10%. It's a 90% plan-paid expense, 10% to the member until your out-of-pocket limit is satisfied, and that includes the deductible, and that's $2,000 per year per person. I think it's on the lower left corner of the sheet you're looking at.
I guess, I guess I don't understand because right here it shows that 80% is all that HAP would cover, and then we would have to cover the remainder 20% of whatever that bill is.
Would you mind if I took a look at what you have there?
This is what we were sent.
Thanks.
Absolutely, sir.
Just for the record here, this is the alternative plan that's being recommended. There's a $100 deductible per person with a 10% member cost share until the member's out-of-pocket reaches $2,000.
Okay. So, we would pay 10% of what that bill is if we were in Florida?
Up to 2,000.
Up to $2,000 is all.
Including the deductible.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject a question, too?
Yes, sir.
Greg, I'm looking at the PowerPoint presentation that the employees or retirees would be further had to have, but there's a particular group that has 124 members enrolled, which I'm guessing is the majority of these, and by what's in here, they have 90% coinsurance right now. Is that, and the coinsurance is what you were just talking about, correct?
Yes.
So, it's 90% coinsurance on the current plan, and it's 90% on the yellow highlighted plan?
Correct. Yeah, for the large majority of Pre-65 retirees, the deductible level and the coinsurance level doesn't change. There's 124 Pre-65 retirees, plus their family members, out of approximately 170 at this point. So, most of those individuals are, you know, I'd argue, kept substantively whole in spite of the plan changes that are being recommended, in spite of the network change, of course, and we understand that that's change.
Can you tell me, because a lot of us...
First name, please?
Oh, sorry, Peggy Taylor.
Thank you, bud.
A lot of us do not do our care here in Jackson because we are not satisfied at all with Henry Ford Allegiance's care and weren't before and still are not. So, we go to Chelsea here in Norbert. Is Chelsea or U of M part of network? Is that all out of network?
The U of M health system? The only hospital in the state that is not in-network is currently Ingram Regional on Lansing. That's actually part of the McLaren system. All other McLaren facilities are in-network. It's just interesting that Ingram is not. But U of M health system, in-network. St. Joe Mercy, in-network.
So, Chelsea doctors, if they're part of U of M or St. Joe's, are in-network?
I can't speak for all physicians. You need to check the directory because the professional, the doctor directory, is different than the facility or the hospital directory. Just because a physician has admitting privileges at a particular hospital doesn't necessarily mean he or she is a participating physician here himself. So, it's very important that you do check those directories.
Yes, sir. First name?
Eric. My question or maybe comment is, a lot of the studies and projected increase in medical care and all this is, I guess, the cause is the Obama care and the changes that are coming up next year. Now, President Trump, I know, has been trying to change that. He's already made some changes just recently, within the last week. So, if he can get the rest of Republicans on board and they come up with a better repeal or replace plan, then, you know, hopefully, they can do it by the year or maybe by next year, isn't all this money and time and effort and projections kind of a waste of time or, you know, I mean, this whole thing could change by the end of the year or next year. So, we're going to make potentially all these problems and change, you know, and change everything based on something that was put in place with the previous president.
I can tell you, neither the Senate or House bills really fundamentally changes the rules of engagement as far as group sponsorship of retiree healthcare. The Cadillac tax is looming out there in a couple of years. There's been no indication that that will be retracted or repealed, so that is an exposure that the county faces. And in spite of, you know, all of the minutia around the Affordable Care Act, the simple fact of the matter is that costs continue to escalate very rapidly, and the county is simply in a position where it can no longer shoulder that burden entirely and disproportionately.
But if it is repealed or replaced, as the President wants to do, then it could cut, you know, costs down and everything else.
I can't speak to what may or may not happen a year or three or five from now. There's no indication at this point that anything's going to change by the end of the year.
But if we do make the changes, then that's definitely going to change, and that's going to impact us for the rest of our lives.
Dwayne, we're going to let everyone else have one chance first, and then we'll see. Please, sir. Todd?
Yep.
You're next.
Just a gentleman's speech here. Sorry, I was a cop, so I'm suspicious of you, okay? But anyways, you had made some comments about, okay, I have my heart attack, I'm somewhere else outside of Jackson, okay? So, we're going to look to the low-cost hospital. And what if that was reversed? I was in Jackson, and I was in Texas. My thing is in Texas, and I have, I have Dr. Semenetti and Dr. Mock, who are one of the best heart surgeons in the United States. You're going to take me out, take me over the, over the tail of the crew because they're cheaper.
You know, the network, again, is statewide, includes all hospitals across the state with the exception of Ingram.
But I'm asking you about the decision process that's going to be made. You already have to tie the flight of doctors here in Jackson, but you're going to take me somewhere else because it's that way they're saying.
You know, I'm not in any position to speak to how they manage their utilization referrals.
Are contradicting your statements, like, first, we started at 20%, now you're making us a deal at 10%, and I still got $49,500 if I'm out of network for a $100,000 event. So, when's that going to happen?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Good answer. When are we going to get some solid numbers here? I think you're deceiving the Board myself.
Final numbers are in the material you have. It's a 90/10% cost shift. I believe I've clarified that.
So, so, we're going to stick to this contract that we have, and they're going to honor it?
It's a 90/10% cost shift.
So, really, we don't know. Back to the first question, we really don't know where I'm going to end up at.
In terms of your out-of-pocket costs?
I have two top-flight doctors here in town. You're going to ship me somewhere else.
Where you end up on an out-of-pocket cost basis is a function of how sick or healthy you are. I can't answer that.
I'm injured in Jackson, and I'm from somewhere else with HAP, and you're going to ship me somewhere else. Like I said, I got two doctors that are very well qualified. Like I said, I got two doctors that are very well qualified cardiologists now, cardiologist surgeons.
If they're in Network, nobody's going to force you to move from one facility to another.
Right, but they're not in Network. They're not in Network. They're not in Network, like you're saying, they're a who's who's of doctors, or else because that's the time and the cost.
Todd, I'm going to let, if Mr. Overton wants to speak to your question.
It really doesn't work like that. If you're seeing a doctor, first of all, you're presuming that you're regularly seeing a physician who's out of Network. You wouldn't choose to see a physician out of Network. There are very capable doctors all across the country who are in Network. I would, you know, would think someone would choose a capable doctor in Network. And far as the numbers, Greg has been very clear about it. It is 90%. Your out-of-pocket maximum is $2,000. That's it. And if it's an emergency, you're in Texas and it's an emergency, well, then it's covered. Am I misstating it?
No, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Luanne, isn't that per person?
Yes.
Yes.
Up to a maximum of two per household.
Right, which is $4,000.
Yes.
And then you're also taking away, I mean, how can you justify, I don't have a co-pay right now, how can you justify taking that away from me for something that, I mean, that's going to devastate me.
Luanne, that's not, unfortunately, that's not Mr. Sermon's choice. That's the Board of Commissioners. So I apologize, but he, he doesn't need to defend that. We, we're the ones that are elected to defend that. Thank you.
My name's Tom. I have a question for you, because I'm pretty sure I heard you wrong tonight. First, when I was speaking earlier, I referenced this contract that I signed with the county when I left in '06. And it talks about all plan changes have to be verified in accordance to Blue Cross Blue Shield guidelines. Just a minute ago, you said, well, no, we didn't talk to anybody at Blue Cross Blue Shield. We know everything they do over there because we know their managers, their directors, and their executives. But we didn't talk to them. They know that you're changing that.
Blue Cross is aware of certain changes that have already been determined relative to the non-represented population active of the county.
I'm going to let Mike Overton answer that also.
Mike, bud?
I'm going to let Mike. Go ahead.
Blue Cross is aware that there's a board meeting tonight. There've been other public meetings. Blue Cross has not been represented. They've not been present at those meetings. They are aware that this conversation is happening. They are aware, we've provided them a lengthy list delineating all of the various plan design alternatives, delivery mechanisms for benefits to the pre-65, which would compete with the HAP proposal. And we're at a point where the HAP proposal, all things considered, access, cost, security, is the clear winner.
Mike? If I may?
Please.
A couple of things. A few years ago, when we looked at this, meaning the last contract around, I would agree with some of your statements in regard to grandfathering in contracts. However, since that time, there's been a number of court decisions, and we have consulted extensively with our legal firm, Peter Cole's firm out of Lansing, and have been assured that the courts now recognize the fact that we can make changes to retiree health insurance. It's legal. We are guaranteed that anything we do here would be upheld in court. So that's where we're taking the steps we're taking. As, yeah, so, you know, there is no contract implied with Blue Cross or anything. Blue Cross doesn't get to tell the county how they can spend their money or, or anything like that. That's, and to suggest that Blue Cross would not be aware of this would be a mistake. We've been in consultation with them a lot. As I indicated earlier, really, the cost, you know, we're looking at an additional $900,000 countywide in our healthcare costs with a $3 million deficit. Now, I appreciate that your co-pay is going to go up, up to 2,000 per individual, 4,000 family max. But at the same time, the county is in a position where, in all honesty, we have to lay people off if we don't make changes to our healthcare. We looked long and hard because we have 600 employees, and the plan that we're proposing for the pre-65s, it's better than the other 600 active employees plan, even as proposed, absolutely better. But the board here has struggled with that, with the, the feeling that, you know, you worked long and hard for the county and that they want to do right by you. That's why, you know, and some of the material that we sent out originally, you know, and I think it's perhaps, perhaps has created more confusion, we had, had, had an option of moving the pre-65s to what the active employees had, because some folks were arguing, well, wait a minute, if it's good enough for active employees, it's good enough for retirees. And then others would argue, wait a minute, our retirees are on a fixed income. And we've gone through a lot of those conversations, heart-wrenching conversations. But the truth be told, and I've been here six years, and we have cut the budget for at least eight years, we have had people at the podium standing here when we had to cut JTA funding, for instance, who told this board at that podium that if we made that cut, they would die. They would not be here the next year. These are heart-wrenching decisions. We take long and painstakingly, we really look at the numbers, who I'm telling you. We look at everything we can to try to make it to minimize the damage to everyone. I'm personally, I prefer Blue Cross, but we can't afford it. It's, it's HAP, and the health network that Henry Ford Allegiance has proposed is a very solid, strong network.
I understand that. But I have doctors that are not under that.
I understand, and I'm going to have to probably change my own doctor as well. But the bottom line is, when it comes right down to it, we're providing a quality plan better than the 600 active employees for pre-65s.
They know what they're signing up for. I knew what I was signing up for 13 years ago, too.
I understand, I understand. But the bottom line is, we have to make some very difficult decisions. And these are, these are decisions that no one takes lightly and that truly affect the lives of not just you, but our 600 employees and their families as well. And there will be, if we don't reduce the $3 million deficit, we'll be in a position where, well, let's just say, the decisions only get harder the longer we delay making these type of decisions.
So my, my question then, sir, to you would be, so the pre-65, I appreciate that you appreciate our hardship. How nice. Now that we got that out of the way, and we're all being nice, let me ask you a question. We all paid for this. You guys decided, well, you can't have that unless we do an actuarial, and we're going to pick them. And you did, and we said yes. And we gave up pay raises, and we took pay cuts, and we took those costs of pay in to get the 2.5 multiplier, to get this health, health insurance. So what you're saying is 600 employees that currently work here that know what they're signing up for and can come and go as they want, they're going to get something less than we do, and somehow I'm supposed to feel bad for them because I paid for something that you're going to take away? And you're going to feel bad that you took it away? So I guess I'm going to feel better that you feel bad. Somehow that makes it right? I'm confused.
No, I wouldn't say that at all. It's an unfortunate situation, but it is the reality.
I'm not going to feel bad. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Wayne, when you researched the idea, and I think we all, most of all of us would agree, we like Blue Cross, and checked all these numbers out, has there been any, as the doctor said, I know U of M, I have family members that, that were at U of M when U of M switched, and U of M switched back because it was horrible. They were getting claims denied, they were having tons of red tape and problems with HAP. And I don't even think it was quite a year, and I know they were absolutely miserable and hated it. Is there, is the board going to look at if a year from now, we all come in and say, you know, look what we got, you have all experienced the same kind of problems we have? If, if they do, I'm saying they will, but if we do, are we going to look at that and look at changing back? And then just one other point, I recently attended a chief's house, and learning more and more about this, the, the, the people that run bigger counties as far as employees than us said that this is something the board created years ago, and I'm not saying any of you folks were on the board, but the board created some of this when they quit putting money in and they quit doing some of those things. So they've run the system sideways, and as the one lady said, a few bad apples are spoiling it for a lot of people, and now all of a sudden, we're the ones that have to pay for it. And, and I just, I agree, and I appreciate the fact that you guys have had to make tough decisions. I understand that happens. It just doesn't feel right.
First, let me say that in the contract that we are signing with HAP, if we are not satisfied, we can, we can terminate it. What is the notice provision?
Typically 30 or 90 days.
Seriously, it's that short. So if at some point we come to the decision that, you know, well, this isn't working for us, and, you know, but I must say, HAP's not, you know, fly-by-night. I mean, they're, what, covering 650,000 people currently or so in Michigan here?
It's the second largest health plan in the state.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, some startup we're looking for here. So, you know, again, we've taken it very serious. We can back out if we were to have to do that.
Doctor?
I'd just like to say one thing to the audience. I understand what your concerns are, and I understand about the deductibles and everything else in out-of-state. But one thing I'd like you to consider is that you have asked us in the medical profession to do things to make you live longer and to give you a better quality of life, okay? You are living longer than you're supposed to, okay? Things are done for you now in regards to kidney transplants, heart transplants, valves, defibrillators, okay, pacemakers and stuff, which you didn't have 38 years ago, okay? And so on. So we have done our job by keeping you alive longer and by improving your quality of life, all right? But that cost, and no one wants to pay for that. And I understand your concern, but you have to look at the benefits that you've gotten over the last 38 years in regards to diagnostic studies, the MRI scans, the CT scans, the PET scans, all the things that we can do to try to diagnose you and treat you early, and the new treatments that they're developing for cancer with the immune system and all that stuff. All that stuff is there, and it's made things better for you, okay? But it costs, okay? And it's going to cost more than it did 38 years ago. So I'd just like to impart those thoughts upon you.
Mr. Alvo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two points, a question for Greg. Greg, how many groups, or how many different plans, I'm sorry, do we have currently? And it's in that document I circulated, but were there 11 or nine, I think?
Sounds about right. I have to count them up.
One of them, the largest group, I think, was 124 retirees in it.
That's right.
And then there were a number of other groups that had two, three, four employees in it, all with different levels of coverage and different deductibles, correct?
Yes.
And the one largest plan, if I recall right from that document, we're talking about 2,000 and 4,000 coinsurance, correct? Under the current one. And under that largest group with 124, I think it's 1,100 and 200, 200, is it?
Correct, yes.
So it's a $900 difference on the individual, correct?
Yes.
And then, just to clarify a point, to make sure that everybody's clear on it, to my knowledge anyway, none of the commissioners here have insurance that's provided by the county unless they're buying it, paying the full freight for it. And I, I don't think anybody has it, but just to be clear on that. Thank you.
Todd, you had a question?
Yeah, just a suggestion.
Second one?
And for the chair here, I think due to the nature of this and that this wasn't well publicized to the retirees, I mean, the only thing I got was a two-page letter. Maybe we could have a couple of retirees also monitoring what's going on, seeing what's happened. Like I said, I've received a lot of phone calls from people saying, what's going on? I think that would relieve a lot of problems down the road, especially when we have an opportunity, if we want to leave HAP, we can, that maybe, you know, most of us are well-college educated people, even some with graduate degrees, that we could be probably helpful in this process. I think you should have that, we should have that opportunity to come in and assist you on this in future. Thank you.
Any further employee comments? Yes, ma'am?
You said the turnaround time was like 30 to 90 days that you could change back if there were problems?
If we wanted to turn it back.
Okay. I work with billing at the health department, and I know that it's not quick turnaround on money coming back. So on, say it's a 90-day, so on the 95th day, you start getting all these rejections, you're beyond the point of, of getting out of it.
Be assured, we don't intend to change. We, we need to do this because we can't pay the bills otherwise. And if we were to revert back, it would be a very, very bad day for everybody, and we would have billing problems. There's no doubt about it. It would be catastrophic. So, you know, you know, Blue Cross would have to come to us with a very significant overture financially for us to switch. Right now, the swing from Blue Cross to HAP, our savings is what, $1.9 million? The total swing versus the increase? Darn close to that. Meaning while we'll save roughly a million dollars towards the $3 million deficit that we're trying to beat in 18, I mean, literally, that's 18, a few months from now, we start that budget. And then the increase in Blue Cross, I thought was like 900,000.
Yeah, so overall, over the three years, at the worst case, given the rate caps that are, that have been put in place, it's just shy of 1.9 million. It could be more.
Yeah. So, so these are very significant dollars that we need to, that's why we're making the change. We need to make the change.
And I realize, I negotiated for years. I, I mean, I had over 30 years with the county. I've been retired for nine. And I, I know, we bargained in good faith, we listened to Steve's father, different ones, Ratchford, Vito, all of them. I just feel like there was a time when we were so overfunded, you guys didn't pay in for like 12, 13 years.
Actually-
Where did that money go?
Let me explain. You're talking about two different things. There's the pension of which everybody gets a pension check, and then there's, you know, the OPEB, that's the healthcare portion. The healthcare portion was never hardly funded at all. We had zero. We pay, you know, basically mouth to hand on the healthcare every year. It's not like, you know, we have any pile of money for that. It's, your pension dollars are very different around your OPEB, and none of the people, none of the 200-plus employees we've hired since we closed the plan have healthcare. So while I understand this is difficult, myself and none of the other people who have been here a dozen years or whatever the number is, I'm not sure, they won't have any healthcare. There's a stark contrast there. And I understand what the doctor was trying, was saying there was, was basically, yes, you were promised a certain level of healthcare. I don't doubt that. But I believe what he was saying was today's healthcare and, and what you were promised 10 years ago, as little as 10 years ago, is very different than what healthcare we have today. It's much more costly, and we cannot keep pace with that. That's the bottom line on it.
And I realize, you guys have a pot of money, you vote it, and you bring it to the bargaining table, and you said, here's the pot. Now you guys figure out how you're going to divide it up for everybody. And every year that you come to the table, you're always in a hardship. I mean-
In fact, I would tell you, and not to, I'll bore the board here, but I'll tell you, everyone here, and I've, because we've said it for ages, the way they fund local government in Michigan is broken. With Proposal A and Headley, our taxable value, our, our revenue will always go up less than our expenses, always, unless they change the law, always. So while healthcare may be double digits, our revenue, what was inflation last year? 1.? What was it?
1.9.
Or 0.9? 0.9 last year. That means our revenue could not go up by more than 0.9%. While I get double-digit inflationary costs, and you name it, whatever it is, insurance, gasoline, healthcare, so every year, we have had to cut the budget every year by millions. And the board, frankly, had said, has said all along, we do not want to make a drastic cut, we want to spin down some of our reserves in our general fund. It was what, 35, 34, 35%? We're down now to what, 27, 28%? Jim? cut, we want to spend down some of our reserves in our general fund." It was what, 35, 34, 35%? We're down now to what, 27, 28%? Jim?
Yeah, less than that, probably 24 to 25.
22 to 24.
Yeah. And so, you know, and what people don't realize, they're like, "Well, you got 24%, that's a lot of money." But we get paid once a year. You know, if you had to live your checkbook with one paycheck a year, come to the end of the year, you're starting to be very careful about your checkbook. It's the same kind of situation, that's why we keep those money, those monies available there. But the bottom line is, unless Michigan legislature steps up and changes how they fund local government, we are gonna end up every year having to cut our budget. I'd like to tell you, this is the last time you and I have this conversation, but the reality is, we have less money with competing expenses every year. There's no fixing it, unless...
It will be the last time, because in a year and a few months, I'll be 65.
Okay, thank you.
Lucky me. No, lucky me.
Yes, sir? First name?
Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Now, the contract I retired on is a little different than theirs. Mine says I'll have the same coverage that active employees have. So my question is, let's say one of the unions is negotiating their contract right now, and they decide that they don't want to do this because they're going through negotiation, and it goes to arbitration, and that particular unit wins their arbitration, it's just pie in the sky, probably. And they don't go to HAP, do the pre-65 still have to go to it? No.
I entertain a motion to come back out of open conversation?
Second.
Have a motion from Phil Duckham, seconded by Dr. Tompkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried, we return to the general business portion of the meeting. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
We're under new business. Oh, excuse me, Administrator Overton, you stated that we needed a motion at this time on pre-65, correct? Entertain a motion, the Administrator's control or recommendation on pre-65 healthcare. I so move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Just hope who's the vote?
Yes, Mr. Trump. Do you second him?
Phil Duckham.
Thank you.
Resolution passed, 7-1. At this time, we're under new business. Item 17A, Finance Resolution 1017.37, amended and restated Comprehensive Financial Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Last month, this board approved a comprehensive financial plan in connection with the issuance of pension bonds. This plan was submitted to the State Department of Treasury, and they've completed a preliminary review of, of the plan and had some suggested changes. Changes are reflected and highlighted in the attached document, and mainly had to do with some actuarial information that was attached to the plan. So the state requires the, the board to approve the amended plan, and we will resubmit it to the state. For your information, we are scheduled, I believe, next week to appear in Lansing to answer questions with respect to the bonding, pension bonding. So this is not going to hold up the sale of bonds, but approval of this resolution is required. Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
No.
I have a motion in support. Any questions? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say, it's a resolution, excuse me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Finance Resolution 09-17.13 to establish the 2018 General Funds, Special Revenue and Capital Projects Funds.
So moved.
You have a motion in support? Jim?
Yes, this is, this will, this resolution will adopt the remaining funds of the county, which are the funds ending in September, excuse me, funds ending December 31st fiscal year.
Commissioner comments? Already have a motion in support? Thank you, Jim. We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. Each individual will state their name, and you have two minutes to address the board at this time. You may only address the board once under this public comment, also in the opportunity, and we, you may not yield your time, nor will the board members debate or answer questions at this time. Second public comment.
Hi, Eric, I am retired with Jackson County Sheriff's Department, just, this is more of a comment. Again, we all put in a lot of hard work, put our lives on the line for a lot of years, and, you know, retirement, now we got our pensions, we appreciate that. We definitely put into that, put our time, made a lot of sacrifices, negotiated a lot of contracts, did a lot of stuff to get to that point. If you guys could just, you know, because, again, I have a feeling we're gonna be back here again, it's gonna be on our pensions. We're getting hit with our medical, and I, I can see us coming, you know. Try to manage, you know, I'm not up there, I'm not making those decisions, I don't know what you guys go through, but, you know, you can't hit our pensions. And I know other departments, other places, they do get hit, you know, look at Detroit, things like that. I don't want to be in Detroit. So, you know, I just, whatever you can do to help us with our pensions, that's, that's all we got. You know, and I'm trying to work right now and make some extra money, you know, for a lot of different reasons, helping kids with college, had to put them in the Obamacare, which was a total disaster, costing thousands of dollars, $6,000 in deductibles, you can't even use it. But, anyway, and then maybe just give us a heads up somehow, if it looks like, so we're not all of a sudden coming in today and finding out that this is happening, if there are some kind of big hardships, I guess, and maybe it looks like you guys might hit our pensions, I don't know how we find out about that ahead of time, I don't know if we can somehow, I don't know. I just, again, just, before, everything is gone, I mean, everything else is gone for current employees.
15 seconds.
We lost longevity checks, everything's gone. It's, doesn't look anything basically the way it used to be when I first started and negotiated to get, but just, please don't hit our pensions. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Tony Bear. Your issue on the pre-65 healthcare, I'd like to commend you and Greg and the people that participated. That had the potential for being much more heated, and that type of issue often has the potential for getting out of control. Commissioners allowing for an open comment and discussion, I think was very nice. It came out, not everybody's 100% satisfied, I'm sure, but the proceedings went, went very well. Congratulations.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed, Commissioner comments? Mr. Duckham?
First of all, I'd like to thank the pre-65 retirees that showed up, you mostly have left. And I'd like to thank Chairman Shotwell for allowing the open dialogue so we could answer your specific questions. I know it's a scary thing to change like this, and I think that through this dialogue we were able to have, there's been a lot of, a lot of questions answered that, that needed to be answered, not only for you, but for the commissioners to make sure that we know how we're voting. And I commend the Chair for his action in suspending the rules, and I think we accomplished a fair amount with, and it did, I think we answered a lot of questions, and I appreciate that.
Commissioner Howell?
Two, two comments, one to thank the rest of the board for letting us have these conversations, not just the one here today, but taking the time to let the retirees express themselves. Secondly, Eric Wisher's gone, but I'd like to say something about what he commented on, anyway, just an assurance that we do take it seriously about the retirement of the pension system, and it's one of the reasons that we were bonding to pay that versus trying to pay it year to year. And the Chair can correct me, but I think we're about 72% funded right now, or thereabouts. And doing this bonding is not us borrowing money from the pension to use for the county, it's borrowing money, or bonding, it's selling bonds to, to pay it ahead, to assure that this doesn't happen. And one of the comments that I think Eric made is one that I had made before, which was about not following the path that Detroit did with going bankrupt and ending all insurance and the retirements. We don't want to end up doing that, and that's one of the reasons we had to take action that we did. So for the time I'm on here, you can rest assured that I'll take that commitment seriously on the retirement and doing the best we can with healthcare.
Any other Commissioners? Tom?
I just want to explain, I voted against the HAP mostly because I, I'm afraid of restricting people to their healthcare. I heard things today that made me feel a little bit better about them being able to get care somewhere else, but unlike the doctor here, I've been in healthcare longer than he has, if it's only been 40 years. And I've, I've worked with HAP when I was in Detroit, and those were the early days, and, and I have to tell you, getting authorization to do anything could take days, and here I am, I have a doctor telling me to get an authorization to get something done, and I can't get that high schooler to authorize it, and now the doctor's saying, you know, "What am I supposed to do? This is what I know the patient needs," and they won't authorize it. So hopefully, that's an old experience, that's not going to happen anymore. You know, if you've got physicians that are associated with Allegiance Health or Henry Ford Allegiance Health, I think somebody talked about, "Would I have to go to Kalamazoo? It's cheaper." One of the reasons that Henry Ford looked at Allegiance is that we're able, or they're able, to provide healthcare for a very, very reasonable rate. So I, I would never assume that you're going to go to Henry Ford Allegiance and go someplace cheaper. If you have a serious condition, you may end up downtown at Henry Ford Main, but I, I suspect that this care will satisfy most everybody's needs. I just don't like getting involved in a healthcare system like that, and that's why I voted the way I did. Thank you.
Commissioners? Doctor?
But you have to understand that Blue Cross and Blue Shield is just as bad, okay? I have people in my office that I have to call up and get certified for MRI scans of their knees, or something else, or their hips and so on, and it's a constant battle, and I have to get on the phone face-to-face to some doctor in, in North Dakota, okay, who doesn't even speak correct English, okay, and so on, to try to beg to get an MRI scan. So Blue Cross and Blue Shield is not the gold standard to compare it to, number one. And number two, Blue Cross and Blue Shield have been raping central Michigan for a long time, charging 20% overhead, okay, for their insurance product and so on, and that's why HAP is here.
Commissioners? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.